Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City Council meeting for the city of Cannon Falls for February 18th to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Ringold.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Hi.
Mundell.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Mayor Althoff.
Here. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've had time to review the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
No, let our... Okay, motion by Bill and second by Mary Jill to approve the agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, presentation. Your presentation tonight, Toward Zero Death Presentation by...
You want to come speak up?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor Althoff and members of the City Council. My name is Jessica Sade, and I am the Goodhue County Toward Zero Death, also known as TZD, Safe Roads Grant Coordinator. And with me tonight...
I'm the... She's the smart side, I'm the experienced side. My name is Scott McConkey. I'm the law enforcement liaison for Southern Minnesota. I work for the Office of Traffic Safety. Formerly, I grew up in Wilmer. I worked for the Candy Ojai County Sheriff's Office as a dispatcher, and I went to Fergus Falls as a police officer, then became a trooper, and then I retired as lieutenant out of Mankato, all to show that I just can't keep a job.
And then...
Oh, you know me. Paul Larson, and I am one of the two officers in Cannon Falls that kind of helped spearhead the TZD through Cannon Falls.
Awesome. So what is TZD? Minnesota TZD works to create a culture in which traffic, deaths, and serious injuries are no longer acceptable through the integrated application of the four Es: education, EMS, enforcement, and engineering. The program also uses data to target areas for improvement, employ proven countermeasures, implement best practices, and advance innovations and new technologies. When TZD began in 2003, there was an increase in traffic-related fatalities on our roads. Six hundred and fifty-five people died on our roadway that year alone. In 2018, we saw three hundred and eighty-one deaths on our road, and preliminary numbers for 2019 shows that we had three hundred and sixty-four deaths on our road, which is a decrease of forty-four percent in deaths since we began our work. I like finding these old pictures, and as you can see, we've come a long way. And we have done a lot of great work to drastically reduce traffic-related deaths, which we should be celebrating. However, in recent years, we have reached a plateau. So we need to continue to educate the public and change the way people think, view traffic safety. Why? Because ninety-three percent of the time, driver error is a contributing factor in crashes. This slide shows how factors such as the driver, roadway, and the vehicle are interconnected. Current traffic safety culture seems to be accepting that driving is just something that we're doing, when in reality, to get to zero, excuse me, we need everyone to realize the importance of safety over convenience.
I think this is where I'm supposed to jump in. You know, the last time I was here, I can't remember, chief, but I brought a radar. I was able to present a free, about a thirty-five-hundred-dollar radar to the PD, but I've learned from experience, you have to be careful when you do that. This gentleman over here, he probably saw me go to me. His name captured me. My in-laws are Maronies. My wife is a Maroni. It's the first time I've seen that name, but I happened to present the same type of radar to the city of Montevideo, and they live just outside of the city. And when you're, all of a sudden, your picture's in the paper, and your mother-in-law finds out you didn't stop by to say hello. I was in the doghouse. And then even worse, a week later, my father-in-law got stopped for speeding, so that was terrible. But last time I was here, I dropped my wife off at the Medford Mall, and I had to talk very fast, because the longer I talked, the more she was going to spend money. But I don't have that limitation today. I'm going to be talking about the enforcement E, and we're just one E that wants to integrate into a total package to try to help keep our communities safer. We do that several ways, but before we go there, through my years as a peace officer and as a law enforcement liaison, I've had opportunity to speak to high school groups a number of times. And I ask them some questions, and sometimes it sparks some pretty deep emotions, but I'll ask for a show of hands. How many know somebody that's been maybe killed in a school shooting, a drive-by shooting, been killed by drug-related incident, or any other deal? And I get some hands. But then when I ask, how many know somebody personally who has died in a crash? Almost one-third, yes, and there's hands. To one-half of the students raise their hands. And so that tells me, I'm not a big stats guy, but that tells me that's a big deal. And we know that that's one of the number-one killers of our youth. So what we have in common here together, as elected officials and myself as a previous warrant officer and as Officer Larson, we all took an oath to do all we could to protect those we serve. We're public servants. And why we're here today is not to tell you how we're going to do that, it's to share some options, and then there's choices to be made. But in the enforcement E, it's kind of like being the parent. We hope we don't get to that point where we have to be the accountability. But you know, if you keep telling your kids, don't do that, don't do that, don't do that, but there's no accountability, they're going to do that. So we're kind of the last resort. But we're hoping by integrating all we do as a package, it changes behavior. And as Jessica has shown, that we were going up and then down, that's happened on a national level, too, because they have found, when we take the most common violations that are contributing to death and serious injury, and packages them together with enforcement, with education, with the media, it has an impact on people that helps change behavior. And we use enforcement, we call high visibility. We want people to see the squad cars. And then when they see the squad car, and they might even make a traffic stop, all of a sudden, they're going, ah, I just saw that commercial. I saw that billboard. I better behave. I better not text on my phone. We might not have stopped for it, but that's perception. One example was my taxman. He said, one year, Scott, I finally started wearing my seatbelt. I said, Gary, what caused you to do that? He said, well, first of all, my girlfriend. I said, what were the consequences if you didn't? He says, I'm not going to tell you. But the other was, at that time, I was a lieutenant with the State Patrol, and we were doing multi-agency saturations, and even as a police officer, I bucked against it. They were saying, why'd you try it? Why'd you try it? Well, we finally went down on Riverfront, posted a squad, an officer in the corner who was watching for people not wearing seatbelts, and then we had squads waiting. Well, he heard about that, and he said, I know, if I don't buckle up, my day's going to come. I'm going to get a ticket. What happened is, Gary never got a ticket, but he changed his behavior. And that's kind of our goal, that by working as a group, we can change those behaviors and impact people's lives. Now, another thing that works in this, you're very concerned, and obviously so, because you want to be here to protect your citizens and make sure they're safe, and traffic is one of those areas. But I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm pretty sure people in Cannon Falls travel outside the city limits. So my guess is, there's a hope that there's people in other communities that are doing the same, and that's our desire. And Cannon Falls has had a long history of participating in these events. And my partner once talked to a city up north and said he really didn't want to participate, and again, that's their choice. But he explained to him, but you know, there's communities all over the state doing this, so when they leave your town, they know they're going to be, have the best odds for safety in traveling. Don't you think you have the, an obligation to do that for others coming here? He goes, yeah, now it makes sense. And that was a cop-to-cop discussion, too. So that's one of the things that's been happening here as well. There's, Goodhue County has probably, I've been doing this for nine years. I've been retired as a cop for nine years. I know my youthful appearance kind of disguises that. But right away, Goodhue caught my attention because they have a very cohesive group of working together to try to have that impact, not just here, but throughout the county, and then as people travel through your various main routes to help keep it safe. Now, and I want to make it very clear, if you have any questions, please ask, because you have every right and obligation to ask. If you have questions about if we're going to be involved in this, we want to know this, so please ask those questions. But one thing, if you notice, I like to use humor. In some ways, it's probably to cover up a lot of hurt. I've developed that over the years, because as a cop for thirty-three years, I saw a lot that I wouldn't wish on anybody. And there was nights, I would come home, and I've forgotten how bad it feels, but it's some of those, not kind of, they still haunt me to this day, but I remember going home many times, thinking, I couldn't feel any worse than I do. And I would sometimes even weep for days because the experiences I had to see and the things I had to tell people and what I had to deal with. And when I think of all that, the goal here is not to have a program. The goal here is to save lives. And then we select programs that has the best impact. And that's why we work with Jessica and all the Es to do that. We're just the one E in the corner doing that. So, and there's one other thing that they have done here, and you might have questions about that, too, but sometimes they move throughout the county, and a select group will work that area. But so when we look at all our enforcement priorities, believe it or not, law enforcement has a lot on their plate. They have a lot of top priorities. But from what I explained, I think we all agree, traffic safety and the safety of our community is one of them. So their resources are minimal, and probably more, and it's not a requirement, but Goodhue County has used this compact agreement where they can move around and do this type of enforcement. Now, if you have questions about that, please ask. Not everybody does it, some do. And they have found whatever helps the best, but what I try to compare it to is like having a drug task force. Another one of those priorities of our safety in our community, but not enough resources, so we share those resources, and they move around within the county or within the task force to help accomplish that. So that's one of the things they've done here. Another thing I've seen them do is, over the years, the move-over violations. Again, they worked as a group, and I've used Goodhue County as an example, how you can work together to help save those or make it safe that work in the road, not just law enforcement, but your utility workers, EMS, fire, that are out on the highway working. So again, this is a total package. Enforcement is one corner, but we want to work with all the Es, and even more so, we want to work with local government officials, so we can come together and see, how can we best help each other to keep your community safe, and when your people leave your community, travel elsewhere. I was just thinking, one more example, when I first started, is with high visibility, the goal is kind of to have less tickets. The more they see the cops, the more they know what's going on, the more behavior you get. I remember when I first started, this is about eight years ago, there was a DWI saturation where they targeted the Afton area. And the cops came to me, said, sorry, Scott, we weren't very successful. We didn't arrest any drivers. I said, well, did you make some stops? So when we first got there, we stopped a few cars. Everybody knew we were there. Hundred percent success, because you had, we had no crashes, we had no drunk drivers, couldn't find one, couldn't buy one. And that's what we're looking for, that high visibility to prevention. But there's those people that, I'm going to admit, that everything doesn't work, so we are going to stop and deal with that as well. So, I took one little slide. I talked a lot, but I just want to say, I'm very passionate about this, and I love your city, I love the people. I've driven out of my way from Mankato City to drive through your town, just because it's a beautiful town. One day I came through, you had music in the park playing, and I just pulled over and enjoyed that a little bit. I haven't found, been able to enjoy your winery, but that's on my wife's list, too. So I enjoy your community, and I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
And then another way of working together, not only as a county, but as a region, is everybody should have received the Save the Date. On May 6th, Wednesday, May 6th, we are having our Southeast Minnesota Toward Zero Death Workshop at the International Event Center in Rochester. So TZD also coordinates some safety activities throughout the county, and here are a few of the ones that we've done here in Cannon Falls, and we have a bunch of them coming up for the rest of the year as well. Another aspect of TZD that we do here locally is facilitate our Goodhue County Fatal and Serious Injury Crash Review Committee. The committee includes representatives from all four Es, and the purpose is to identify patterns that contributed to recent crashes, and therefore the fatalities and serious injuries that occurred from those, so that we can determine specific actions that we can take as a coalition to help prevent similar crashes in the future. And with that, our goal is zero, and we need your help, because zero is attainable, but it takes all of us working together to achieve that. So thank you very much for your time today and allowing us to speak.
It kind of looks like a big crash.
It does, kind of. I never thought of it that way.
If you looked at a little fire truck, I hit right over there.
With the law, no cell, or hands-on, are you seeing it? I know I see all kinds of people still, don't worry. But has that helped, a little bit in accidents?
There, you know, I haven't seen the crash stats. I know when they implemented this in New York, and there was another state that our law was modeled after, their first year, they saw a ten percent reduction in fatalities right away. So we're going after a model that we saw work. The other thing is, it doesn't necessarily stop all the distraction, but it gives law enforcement a tool to deal with it. Before, it was very difficult to make one of those citations stick. You know, it's one of those violations, when you do stop somebody and you give them the ticket, they go, yeah, you're right, shouldn't have done it. You know, we all agree, but we do it, and it's hard to put it down. So the law allows a one-touch to make a call, but if you pick it up in your hand, and I remember, we all make mistakes, my brother called, my wife was talking to him, well, here, here's your brother talking. My bribe, and I'll go, ah, threw my phone. But it's that, again, that learned behavior, and it is going to have an impact.
But it also gives you a great excuse not to answer your phone.
Yes.
I can't, I'm driving.
Yep.
And August will be a year. So at that point, then, we'll be able to tell a little bit with that, but August will be a year of that law.
Morris, to go to your question, what we've seen, and I've seen pulling people over for it, right away initially, right after the law came out, no one was using their phone. But now, people I pull over, it's kind of the same thing, it's, oh, I totally forgot. Or that emergency aspect, to them, it's emergency, but for a statute, it's call 911, you know, someone's like, oh, I just had to get ahold of my sister really quick. Well, that's not an emergency. But I think those stops, and then with Department of Public Safety, more advertising, reminding people, hey, remember, this is still a law.
Still got people not using their seatbelts. And how long has that been?
That's the fine for...
You know, believe it or not, we got people still speeding, and we've been working...
I know!
I believe the first fine is something like seventy-five dollars, and then additional court charges, but the next one's like three-fifty. So they really hammered that second time.
How many do you see in, around town here?
I would say within a week, we maybe stop three to five. A lot of time, now we're getting two people who are driving and texting and kind of doing this, when it was legal. Now it's...
Oh, God, it's getting worse.
So it's worse in a way, too, but, and then as law enforcement, it's a little harder for us to, you know, they're just looking down and say, oh, no, I was looking at something else. It can be a little harder for us to prove.
Yeah.
Well, I got to tell you what I'm passionate about. Okay, maybe you figured I'm old. But when I just met Paul, I've been talking with him, but when I see you have officers like this with this type of dedication and passion for what they do, and I think your chief's getting old, too. I'm not sure. I've been going here for a while. But when we see young people like this coming along, it just thrills me to see this as kind of people that are serving our community.
Yep.
Any more questions?
Questions?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if any questions ever do come up, don't hesitate. You can get my email from the chief or Paul, or, you know, be more glad to come back, or... I just live over by St. Clair and Mankato, it's not too far, so.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion. The resolution is council business. For you in the audience and at home, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending December 31st, 2019. Item B, the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending February 13th, 2020. Item C, minute meetings for the January 28th, 2020 City Council Work Session. Item D, minute meetings for the February 4th, 2020 City Council Work Session. Item E, minute meetings for the February 4th, 2020 City Council Meeting. Item F, approve an ownership transfer of liquor license to Rancho Local Bar and Grill. Item G, Resolution 2465, accepting a $500 grant from Renewing the Countryside for the Farmers Market. Item H, contracted police services. Item I, hire a Maintenance One operator. Item J, Resolution 2466, accepting a $1,000 grant from the USDA administered by Renewing the Countryside for the Farmers Market. And Item K, Resolution 2467, accepting a $1,000 grant for the Farmers Market. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
Item H.
Item H, contract police services. I think we'll put that as the first order of council business, and might make it...
So that'll be A?
A1.
A1, or 1A?
1A, whatever.
We want it to be first, so.
Okay, is there anything else council would like to pull down? If not, I accept a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item H. Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Morris and second by Derek, approve the consent agenda minus item H. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We'll move on to council business, and we'll, item 1A is contracted police services. We'll move on to council business, and we'll, item 1A is contracted police services. Bill, you pull that down.
Uh, yeah, in the past, I've stated my, my view, that I, I'm not real in favor of having our officers do these contracting services. The city gets nothing out of it, um, and I believe there still is a, some liability, although I know this is addressed a little bit. There are so many questions on this, we all received a email from a citizen detailing a lot of questions that have never been answered on that, but I, I just believe it's too, uh... we, we just shouldn't be doing this. It'd be a lot simpler to just stop doing contracted services.
What's the opinion of the winery? Do they, do they need the service? What, what communication?
So I, I talked with, with Ann shortly after this conversation started, she indicated that they wanted to continue to use the services, they find value in it, they're hoping the city would continue it.
Did, did you show them the, the new sentence or paragraph here that got added?
Nope.
So you don't know if they're in favor of that or not?
Nope. From, from what she indicated was, just once you figure out what you want, send us the contract, and they've had no problems with, with their service, they appreciate being able to hire officers for their events, they don't anticipate problems, they have us there proactively to prevent any issues that could occur. To them, it's a cost of doing business, I doubt if any change in price or terms is going to really impact their decisions.
Do you, do your officers want to do that job, or is it, or do you think...
Well, we have, we have Paul out in the lobby, if you, give me a second, I'll grab him.
Yeah, I just be curious what they...
He's, he's the union steward for the local officers, so you'd probably be able to answer that.
Yeah. Paul, we've been, we've been talking about the, the services right at the winery.
Oh, yes.
And, do you, the rest of your officer, do they want to do that job? Is it a, is it burdensome for you to work the extra hours, or how do you feel?
Every officer's a little bit different. Some, we had an officer, I, I looked at the stats, I got the stats from the last, like, three or four years, about. We had one, he left, but one year, he worked like 14 of them. He had a wedding coming up, so he was saving up for that, but we all, we distribute it about as evenly as we can. This past year was a little bit different than in my four and a half years here, it was, we had an officer out on approved leave, one who had a new baby, one whose husband was deployed, one part-timer who was working almost full-time, day shift, and another one who works a full-time job along with this. So you take those five people right there, and it's tough to always fill that spot. But as a group, yeah, we still enjoy it, we like doing it, we like being able to be there for the winery. I know it's a big tourist attraction, and we want people there to feel safe, as if it's something that I know was discussed about, if it's contracted out, something to think about. If they have a contract security company, their only ability is to trespass people from that property, and we're getting called there anyways.
There's been a lot of write-ups in the paper, and I saw it on the news, too, and it concerned the Minneapolis Police, and they have a problem that their officers were putting in a lot of off-duty time, they didn't have a policy, and they were putting in the equivalent, a lot of them, of three days, besides their 40 hours a week as a, on duty, and the fatigue thing came in, but that is pretty much the case here, but...
No.
And that was one of the reasons why we, you know, wanted to look at constructing this as controlled by the city, so that we would know what they're working, how often, if, you know, wineery to say we want somebody seven nights a week, we would be able to tell them, "That doesn't work for us, prioritize the nights that you want us there."
And looking the last four years, 35, 32, 37, and 43 total events, and that's from about end of April till a few in November.
Just whatever the wedding season is, you know, last year, I think they didn't really start until into May, but they ran all the way into November. So, you know, as, as they do it, it just is one of those things, sometimes it's Friday, sometimes it's Saturday, sometimes it's both. The last year, there weren't too many boths, it was either one night or the other.
How do you arrive at the, what the rate is? What is it, 72?
So, what we, what we did was, we took the, for, for purposes of this, we took the overtime rate for the top-end officer, which is effectively where we were last year. We took the administrative costs, para, social, not social security, Medicare. Lynell and Michelle had given us the numbers, the percentages, the multipliers, and then we can factor all that out, and then I talked with Sarah to determine how much administrative time she puts into billing it out, and then we took her rate of pay at that amount of time, and added that to it. And so that's how we came to the, I think it was 72?
Is that the same rate you had last year?
Nope, that's about $10 more than last year.
$10 more. I guess my feelings are, I, I don't want to tell an off-duty policeman, or, you know, if he wants to do it, I mean, feel free, but, you know, this liability thing comes in, I think maybe we've addressed that.
Yeah, the liability component, we checked with the league, they said that already, you know, this, this type of activity doesn't really have any more potential liability for us than the officers working, other than the officers would be working more. So the types of events that they would expect to be involved in, on-duty officers would potentially be involved in, so they said, you know, from a, how do they, actuarial something, something, it really didn't matter, our rates don't go up as a city, they've already factored, what is it, what are the risks associated with operating a police department? And this is just already included in that.
But if someone was injured, our rates would go up after that.
Potentially, it would depend, you know, where comp claim could result in a change of indexing, because they use a five-year average for that.
Yeah.
So if we had somebody who was injured significantly, yep, but the same thing happens relative to regular patrol duty, too.
Right.
In this way, we're, we're providing a service that businesses or other entities may need, they're footing the bill, rather than, you know, taking resources away from the rest of the community.
This policy also talks about that you, as the chief, and you seem to have ultimate power in all this, if an officer is on sick leave, light duty, or, you know, or injured or whatever, and can't work for the city, you still have the power to approve them to do that duty at the winery.
In theory, yes, in reality, likely not, because what we don't want to do is create a, it's just where they can't be on vacation and do it, is we don't want to create a situation of double dipping. It just doesn't look good, the optics on it are not very good. Now, does that mean that there's something that could happen that we wouldn't consider? Could they do some part of it? Maybe, but it would have to be a pretty special, pretty significant event for us to, to look at that.
And that's something that Jeff and I talked about, too, where it's like sick, if I'm out on paternity leave for two weeks, and church comes and says, "We want someone," okay, for that day, then I'm going to come off my paternity leave to fill this, because it makes the most sense, and other officers can't do it. So it's a very minute, small example of it, but written in there, so we have that opening in case, we do it with an agency of only six full-time patrol officers, we want to be able to provide that to the community and not let it go to waste.
But say, using that example, if you're out on leave or something, and then do, take a day, does that create more headaches for payroll?
Payroll's payroll.
Yeah, it would, because he would be changing what he was getting paid for, it would be coming out of different accounts.
Payroll gets done on a two, no, because payroll gets done anyway on a two-week period.
Yeah, but it would change where he was getting paid from.
The way that Sarah codes it, it really wouldn't have much of a difference.
Yeah, it does.
Because she, she inputs...
You ever done payroll? It's a lot of work.
Well, we could get, we could get her here to tell me, but what I've asked her, she says she keys in everything that day, so if somebody's sick, she keys in sick, if somebody's on vacation, she keys in vacation. It's not like she does it differently because of any other status, everything gets keyed in every pay period.
But we still had, and I asked about this a couple weeks ago, the cost, and you said you've addressed it and what it is, but there's loss of productivity here, too, whether it's for a payroll person, or you, or Joe.
And again, that's why it's built into that, that number.
But you guys blew me off last time, like, "Well, it only takes a couple of seconds to do that." Well, I'm sorry.
Well, it's not really blowing you off, but it's answering your question. Literally, it does only take a couple of seconds on some of this stuff. The payroll side might be more, which is why we asked Sarah what it is to input it, and then what it is to invoice it.
But I still think the amount, the potential, however small of like, chance of someone getting hurt on that duty, I, I just don't think it's worth it for the, for our department to do that. That's, that's my thought, and I'm going to make a motion that we, well, no longer...
There's still more discussion to be had.
I can still make a motion.
Make a motion and second, and then more discussion.
I'm going to make a motion that we no longer engage in these, what's the word I want to use?
Contracted.
Contracted services with our, our police force.
Seconding that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been sec, made and seconded to, you know, any discussion first.
Well, yeah, these guys want one.
Jeff, Officer Larson, are you considering leaving town? Under this proposal?
I'm not sure I follow your question.
Are you going to Treasure Island?
No, well, the...
That was, you, you claimed that was discussed at one meeting, it never was, so I, I just want to clear that up.
Nope, it, it was, I raised the issue, and I said, if we're going to look at something like that, we should build it into the policy now, it would have to come before console, because there'd be a separate contract or mutual agreement for that services. We would not roll that in as part of this, no. But the policy has components to that, and the only reason we did that was to delineate, because we've got this agreement that businesses would sign. So if we had a Prairie Island-type situation, that would... That would be a local or tribal government would initiate a request for contracting by contacting the chief of police, and then we would enter into an agreement for whatever those contracted services are. So it just allows if Treasure Island or Prairie Island community wanted to hire officers, Red Wing had something that they needed a bunch of officers for, that provision is within this policy to allow that to occur. A good example would be the National Republican Convention, it was here. They put out a request statewide for officers, that would be that type of situation, because they were then contracting with the city to provide X number of bodies.
That being said, if, if this is agreed upon, you still have to come to the council.
Yes, that would not be just blanket, it's done, no. Every agreement that we would enter into with any other local or, I think I phrased it, local or tribal government, would come back before this body, before it would be approved and initiated, or not initiate, but be contracted, services provided.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to discontinue the contracted police services. Is there any other discussion?
What do you think?
I don't want them to, I mean, it's an opportunity for you guys to get some extra money. I don't know if, I'm a little bit, you know, I think that's important. The other way, I, I don't know, I'm kind of tore up on it, but, but I think it's, you got to make money to it.
To me, this doesn't cost us anything. If the officers want us to take their weekend off to go do it, so be it. It shows some goodwill to the winery and the community, it also shows the officers some goodwill from us, that, you know, "Hey, if you want to go make a couple hundred bucks on the weekend, on your weekend off, go for it." So to me, I mean, there's, it really doesn't matter.
I wouldn't mind if they were not associated with the city of Cannon Falls, like they decided they were going to go, you know, whether it's work at Treasure Island, or go to, you know, if it's something out of town, where we are not responsible, that I might be able to live with, but...
But the example that the mayor brought up before, of being able to control what they do out of their time, or knowing where they're at here at the winery, versus having a separate job and working all those extra hours, and then getting tired and making mistakes on the job, that would cost the city more. I think it's a good relationship with the...
You're saying you'd be all right with the winery, but nothing else?
No, 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 I don't...
He's encouraging that they have a job somewhere else.
No, no, I'm not encouraging them, I'm just saying, I, I don't want it being done in town here because of the potential extra liability.
I think one thing with a liability, say we're not working anymore, and they do hire a company, or they don't hire anybody, and we get calls there, we're still responding, because if we have a security company, like I said, the best they can do is trespass, and for that to happen, you're still calling us, so if they have someone who has too many fireballs at the wedding reception, and wants them removed, it's us showing up, and who do you want handling that? A police officer who has been trained in that, and know how to de-escalate the situation, who has a relationship with the winery, the bartenders, the manager, the staff there, or someone who's coming in from, you know, a security company that's about 19 years old, is going through a school program, or has never found a cop job, and now they get to play big bad bouncer for the night.
But it's no different than if you have to show up at another place in town, because...
Yeah, so you're saying the liability's the same.
Right.
Yeah.
I think one of the things, you know, as Paul's alluding to, I mean, you know, mayor in, in one of your other hats, is the Fair Board. You know, the Fair Board has had, you know, private security coming in, but they ultimately end up having to call us to deal with, you know, things that, that are found. And what that does is it takes away on-duty resources. This is designed so if an event knows they want officers' services, they are paying for it. They're dedicating an officer to that event, so that it's not taking away officers from other things that are occurring in the city. It seems to me like a win-win. Paul's right, I mean, one of the, the things that, you know, the officers end up doing while they're working that event, is just talking to people, and during that time, what are they, what are they doing? They're promoting our community, they're promoting our department, you know, that type of community outreach is incredibly valuable, whether it's somebody from out of town or not, we still want to have those contacts, and they, they're a benefit for not only the agency, but our, our city.
You know, it's interesting, have you ever been asked to do this by Mill Street Tavern?
I don't think Mill Street has. We've had an inquiry, we had an inquiry, I think, from the VFW for a wedding that they were concerned about, ultimately that wedding didn't end up happening.
Yeah, I remember that.
But, you know, like, Mill Street is big in the class reunions and all that, I mean, any place that serves alcohol's got this issue, this potential issue. I guess where I'm coming from is, I don't understand, I, I don't, I don't see the compelling need to be doing this. You've never had an incident, right? You've never had a big...
Nope, the winery, the winery could have said, after not having a year of incidents, "We don't want to spend the money anymore." What they've told me is, "We don't mind spending the money." We find it valuable, because it's been a benefit for us, when there have been problems, somebody needed to be talked to, their staff didn't have to, you know, worry about watching them, the officer could watch them.
I get that. I get that.
If they had a wedding that had a lot of high valuable gifts, they let us know, and then we can keep an extra eye on that vehicle. A lot of times we're having to move it up so that, you know, we can keep an eye on it, um, in front of the place.
I guess what I'm getting at more is, if we do this with the winery.
Mm-hmm. Um. But remember, it's not just the winery.
No, I know, I know.
You guys keep locking on the winery.
Well, the reason I'm saying.
This is available to any, any business that wants to use it.
But let's say that now Artisan Plaza comes to you for twenty events a year, and, um, the brewery comes to you for twenty events a year, and Mill Street Tavern comes to you for every class reunion, including my very raucous class the other year that had one. Um, how are we ever gonna think about staffing these?
And in those situations, yep, we would have to deal with those first-in, first-served type situation. And if they needed three officers in one weekend, we might be able to do that. It would just depend on the weekend.
Okay.
Haven't been in that situation yet.
You mentioned the fair earlier, it made me wonder, we have the fire department there for the derbies. What, how, what's our relationship with that? Do they pay us for tho, for them? Or do they volunteer, do you know?
You're saying, what if they got hurt there?
No, 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 well, but they've always had.
They could get hit by a car.
I think we may, we may make a contribution to the fire department.
Okay.
Fair, okay.
I mean, it's a similar situation. We also have our EMTs at the football games, that I'm sure the school pays for. The, the ambulance football could hit the windshield and crack the windshield, you know?
But we've hired, we've hired a security at the, uh, outfit out of Rochester one year to do the security at the demo, definitely jury.
I'm just talking about the fire department specifically.
Like Jeff says, if something go wrong, you'd have to be called anyhow, so. It was a total.
I'm just saying, you know, the city loans out other departments to community events all the time. And to me, this isn't all that much.
That's the difference right there, Derek, community versus private events.
Yeah, they're, they're different.
They are, you have to pay to get in the fair, so it's, it's not public.
What if we just, uh, let it go for this year and look at it? The reason I'm saying, you know, we weren't really involved before, and maybe we can just have to make a few changes.
Sure, I mean, you know, from, from, yep, I, I get what you're saying, Morris. And I, I think that's fine. Um, one of the things that is, we've been doing it for five years. And I think we've got a pretty good track record of these events without any issues. Granted, yep, they could happen, but I could walk out this door and trip on the mat and, you know, get injured.
Yeah.
So I mean, to, to, what if this, what if this happened, what if that happened? I don't think those are really, you know, things to worry about. They're something to consider, certainly. But I think the same mi, moment, you could say, well, what if nothing ever happens? We try our min, best to minimize things.
Right.
Um, when the officers are working these events, they're not there, um, you know, to try to get into fights. They may happen, but just as easily can happen at Mill Street or at Brewster's, because they don't have anything. And, you know, there are communities where they've passed ordinance, there's a requirement of officers' presence. I used to work in a community that had that. Um, I don't know if that's always the best way. I think, you know, like John, you alluded to, you recall the one at the VFW that they were worried about.
Yeah. Never materialized, but they worried.
Yep, yep, we had another wedding that was gonna be a neighborhood. And they considered hiring us just to help with controlling parking. So I mean, there are situations that, um.
Are, are, Marsha, you, you're saying you wanna.
By letting go, you mean, just let it happen?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we made some changes.
Look at it again next January?
And let's just kinda.
Mr. Mayor, I wanna call the question.
Well, I was about to ask Morris if he wanted me to withdraw my motion.
The motion on the floor.
Oh, I was thinking, you know.
Well, that's fine, you can call the question, that's fine, it fails, it fails.
We've got some new stuff, and maybe we just have to make a later, see how it really goes, you know? Which I think it, it will now.
You're okay with?
Uh, one year.
One year.
See. Okay, well, in that case, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. Do you wanna, do you wanna make a motion then?
Yeah, I'll make it.
Do it for one year?
One year, and just kinda, you know, off and on, just fill us in, and 'cause maybe we need to make a few changes in the wording or, or something, you know, and.
Well, I think the, the agreement that we have before you, um, you know, is certainly, uh, more in-depth from the feedback I got from Roger. As I included in the memo, he had, uh, you know, one sentence he wanted to have added, and it was added to it. Uh, the policy is more concise, um, addresses, you know, essentially, I think, four, uh, components. Outside employment, contracted services, officer interviews, and volunteer activities. And essentially what we're, you know, spending our time focusing on is contracted services, um, which again, isn't just the winery, it could be any business.
Right.
Um, and we may not have any this year. I mean, the winery could say, you know, that we thought about it, and we don't wanna do it. We have no idea. Um, I didn't go back to ask them, having had the conversation, they, she just indicated, just when you get the stuff, send it to us.
Right.
So.
And ALS could just, one more time, because this is really, this is really my biggest issue. We are not obligated to fill these shifts.
Nope, and in fact, a shift that's filled, uh, could be pulled. Because we have, let's use our tornado, for example.
Yeah.
Um, you know, winery might've had a generator, but we need the body somewhere else. Um, and then there's no liability to us for having canceled it. The agreement is written, I asked Roger to, to look at that component, just to make sure, you know, they can't say, well, you didn't have somebody here, and now our bartender got hurt. You've got no liability.
Or you owe us money.
Exactly, yep.
Right.
I just wanna bring something up while we're still talking about, 'cause I know there's been a lot of talk from up here and around town about Jeff padding his wallet with this winery stuff. You look at the last four years, yeah, Jeff last year worked nine. And that gave you a lot of reasons why we had almost half the patrol force that couldn't fill those shifts. Years before that, four, two, and two.
Yeah.
So when you look at it as, we get the list in about April, and all the patrol officers sign up for what you want. When it's about that week before, that's when Jeff sends out the email and says, hey, there's one on Friday. Can anyone pick it up? And I got family plans, Christine's out camping. That's when he picks it up. So when he got nine shifts last year, it was because half of our patrol force was out on something, and the other half is working that week.
Well, and that kinda plays into my question. Because I just wanted to make sure that he wasn't taking all these shifts because we have to fill them. That was my.
They get, they get first shots at it.
Okay.
As Paul alluded to, they're bidding it in April for stuff in November.
Yeah.
And a wedding can happen, and, you know, so if they can't fill it, we try to find an officer that can. If they can't, then Joe or I will. This past summer, uh, Joe had a lot of other things personally going on, he didn't have the ability. Uh, if you look at, you know, the numbers Paul has, um, otherwise, Joe usually beats me by, you know, one shift. Um, you know, historically, this was just a, an odd year because of the, you know, as Paul alluded to, just the, the strain that our staff was under. We did a great job of getting everything covered. Those are just things we weren't able to get us covered.
Mm-hmm.
So your motion is to accept the renewed contract service agreement for one year.
For one year.
One year.
For one year.
Is there a second to that motion?
I have just a question for.
Go ahead.
Two thousand twenty?
Yes.
This, this year.
Yeah, calendar year.
This year.
'Cause we're gonna have to set a rate next year anyway, and it'll come back before you guys.
Right.
Whether it's as a, a, a whole component, or just, you know, hey, do you wanna continue to do this? Here's the rate we'd be charging for twenty twenty-one. Um, the way things are, it's not a big deal if it's done in December, done in January. Um, ideally, we would want to know what the wages are. So, you know, we may, we may wanna push that out. Um, if they're not finalized by the time we hit there, I may just ask you guys to continue this component until that's finalized. And then we're getting agreement with LA LS that the twenty-twenty wage will be used until they settle. Um, the only thing I would add is that this has been part of a larger component, not just the contracted police services, but also the policy. Uh, so the request, I was requesting from you guys would be the uh, approval of the contracted police services application agreement and department policy. What I would ask is if you're gonna do this for one year, would be to separate those into two things. Approve the contracted police services application and agreement, uh, to be used for, you know, one year, or year twenty-twenty, and then approve the, the other part, policy so that that doesn't terminate at the end of twenty-twenty.
I'll go with that.
Okay, so you've got a motion to approve the contracted police services for two thousand and twenty. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Steve. Go ahead, a motion to approve the contracted police services agreement for one year, two thousand and twenty. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Aye.
Four to two, it passes. Is there a motion to accept the police policy?
I'll make a motion to approve the policy.
I'll second.
A second, motion by Matt, a second by Morris to approve the policy. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Aye.
Four to two, that passes. Thank you, Paul. Okay, let's move on, council business. Item A, the city administrator position. Dave, you wanna lead us into that?
Since the city council interviewed Neil Jensen as a candidate for the city administrator position, uh, the mayor and I were authorized to initiate contract conversation with Mr. Jensen, which we have done. Earlier this evening at a work session, uh, meeting of the city council, we, we reviewed, uh, the employment agreement. And it's that document that I'll just overview tonight for, uh, the council and the public. And I'm just gonna go in order of the, the way that the contract's written, which the council's familiar with. But for those in the public, uh, this contract would begin, if it's approved tonight, would begin on the twenty-third of March, two thousand twenty. That would be the day that Mr. Jensen would arrive for full-time employment under this particular agreement. That's March twenty-third of, of this year. The agreement relative to terms and benefits and salary is consistent with the, uh, last several contracts for city administrators that have been previously approved by the city council. Specifically with respect to, to health and dental insurance, like many contracts of this type, uh, the, uh, health and dental insurance would be paid by the employer, in this case, the city of Cannon Falls. Specifically in this case, for Mr. Jensen as an employee of the city. And because his wife provides currently, uh, health and insurance for his family, that would continue to be, uh, in place here, which would save the city of Cannon Falls, uh, significant money during the period of time in which he's covered. So within the agreement, uh, there's specific language that, that details, uh, the payment relationships between the city, Mr. Jensen, and the, uh, insurance he'll get covered from his, from his spouse. So that's talked about in, in section four. The vacation holidays, holidays, uh, consistent with every other employee in the city. And in this case, Mr. Jensen's coming from Zambrota with, uh, thirty days vacation per year. That's the same allowance offered in, in this example. However, for two thousand twenty, Mr. Jensen has asked for, uh, eighty hours of vacation in the bank. He already has an existing vacation schedule prior to considering, uh, the opportunity here. So we'd like to have that, uh, time available for him. So within this contract, uh, it again, is consistent with the thirty days per year, but allows him, uh, the two weeks, the eighty hours, uh, effective the first date of employ, of employment. The salary in this instance is, is proposed as a grade twenty, step seven, which under the current two thousand twenty, uh, grade, grade and step system would be slightly over a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. That salary would be subject to review and consideration by the, uh, city council following the first six months, uh, of employment with, with the city of, of Cannon Falls. Additional compensation is, is provided within this agreement for a car allowance. That's something that, uh, I currently have it within my contract. Ron Johnson, Aaron Reeves also had that in their contracts previously. So there is an allowance in here for, uh, for car allowance, and that's consistent with prior actions. There is a severance agreement, uh, provision in this contract calls for a six-month salary and benefit payment in the event of the termination, uh, of Mr. Jensen, should he accept, uh, and be hired as city administrator in Cannon Falls. And that's, as we talked earlier, that's a fairly, uh, consistent, uh, severance provision for agreements of, of this type. And finally, just to say, we talked about in, in the work session, uh, this, again, this contract is, it can be continued unless terminated by one or the other party. Uh, so this is an ongoing document, uh, that will exist over time. Can be modified, can be revised, uh, subject to your approval and, and Mr. Jensen, should he become city administrator in, in Cannon Falls. So I think those are probably the main, uh, terms that we discussed at the earlier session. The main terms that Mayor Althoff and I discussed with, uh, Mr. Jensen since the interview. And if the council elects to approve this, uh, employment agreement, I would anticipate, uh, Mr. Jensen will, uh, agree to these terms. He has reviewed these terms, we've been in communication with him regarding these terms. So I would expect that, uh, if the council does, uh, approve this, uh, employment agreement as we discussed earlier, uh, that Mr. Jensen would, would similarly agree to these terms. So with that, I'll just maybe stop, and just, if there's any questions, any things that maybe wasn't clear, uh, or needs to be discussed more at this point?
Clear.
Anything?
Be clear.
I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept this, uh, employee agreement with, uh, Neil Jensen.
Second.
Motion is made by Bill and second by Steve to accept this city administrator position at, uh, contract for Neil Jensen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Passes five to one. Okay, moving on. We gotta reschedule our March third, twenty twenty city council meeting, primary day. Do we wanna move it up a day, or move it ahead a week?
I, I would think March second, the Monday, would work. 'Cause we don't wanna do it on March fourth, 'cause that's, it's during Lent, Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Do that. So I would suggest March second.
When is the school board?
Oh, yeah, that's a Monday, Mondays.
Is it first and third? So should we maybe move it to the second Monday, or second Tuesday?
Let, let me offer, just for consideration, I mean, we're not, we're two weeks from now with, with the agenda. I'm not aware at the moment of anything particularly pressing for March third. So potentially, if we met March seventh and not March third, that might be sufficient. But as a backup, if there was a date after March third, that could tentatively work out for the seven of you if need be. Uh, we could certainly, you know, move towards that end. But right now, I'm not aware of anything specifically that has to be, uh, taken care of March third.
How about Thursday the fourth?
Uh, it'd be the fifth, wouldn't it?
Their fifth.
Tuesday, yeah.
Whatever.
And there have been months where you've done just one.
Yeah.
And, you know, if something needed to be called, came up that had to be addressed, the mayor could always, you know, call a meeting. If the, you know, administrator's indicating there's nothing pressing.
Of course, I don't want, I don't wanna go four weeks, though, without.
Okay.
I, I think we should stay on top of things.
Would Thursday the fifth work?
Works for me.
Six-thirty?
Fine with me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
Depends on the, uh, orthodontist appointment in Northfield for my daughter. How long that takes, on that Thursday.
And you don't care that it won't be here?
There you go.
Would seven o'clock be better? Maybe not?
Hmm, like I said, six-thirty's tight, but just keep it.
Six-thirty on the fifth?
Okay.
Hey, a motion to prove the meeting to March fifth at six-thirty?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Bill and second by Morris to move the next council meeting to March fifth, six-thirty. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, resolution twenty-four sixty-eight, authorizing a finance committee. Dave, you wanna take that one?
Yes, this has been kind of a work in process, going back even to the, the goals, goals discussion a year ago in March about the potential of, of, of setting aside on behalf of the city council, a, a smaller group that would become more actively involved with, with the finances of the city. And we've, we've talked about this, you haven't seen this until, uh, this meeting, but I wanna call your attention to item number three in terms of, of the duties. And I think this is something we've touched on some or all of these financial considerations, uh, throughout the course of the year, and particularly when we get into the, into the annual budget. But what this committee would do if it's appointed. But what this committee would do, if it's appointed, would be to deal with the annual budget, as would the full council. So it's not a substitute for the full consideration of the council. Perhaps those who aren't on the committee would prefer that, but that's not the case here. Utility rates and, yeah, utility rates and charges. Again, while that was a goal of last year, I guess I would say goal achieved, there was not any increase so far in in 2020. But as we agreed, that there's going to be either council or a finance committee, if there is one, who will actually get in and look at the year-end financial lot of 2019, look at all our utility funds 2019, and either talk as an entire council or have a finance committee do the heavy lifting in terms of really reviewing rates and charges where we're at and coming back with a recommendation. That could certainly be a function of of this group. Labor contracts and negotiating strategies. We have three labor contracts that are pending for consideration this year. If the finance committee was going to do that, they could do that, that can be a closed session if they choose to make it a closed session. But I would see a group like this being being in charge of of taking on the the opportunity to negotiate three contracts. Capital planning and equipment needs. We've talked most recently about the swimming pool. A group like this may or may not be participating in that, but we know we've got water tower improvements. We know we've got other infrastructure, equipment needs throughout this community all the time, right Wes, Jeff, all the time. And to to wait until the annual budget doesn't always meet the needs of when these expenditures probably are pressing and have to be dealt with. So a group like this could deal with with capital planning and equipment needs. Infrastructure financing plans and projects, there again, that that could be a swimming pool, but it could also be, is there going to be the fifth neighborhood? If so, where and when and how? The mill and levy, the mill and overlay project, we've got the money budgeted, but we don't have any specific meat on the bones for where it's going to be, when it's going to happen, and how much can we cover in $130,000? Do we do it all this year? Do we set that summer all that money aside for next year? I mean, those are issues that really need some some conversation and some evaluation. I could see the the finance committee doing that. Tax levy and other revenue sources. We had a good conversation, I think, through the four or five work sessions we had for the 2020 budget and ultimately found a compromise of a 4% levy increase, but it took some time to get there. A group like this at the direction of the council could take more responsibility for that early on, if the council wanted them to do that. Other revenue sources, we're always looking for other revenue sources and and a finance committee could certainly take a closer look at 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 sources of of financing outside of just the pure tax levy. Employee compensation benefit programs, most recently, we've talked about, you know, health insurance, that's not going to go away. That's a project on to itself and is going to take someone's time and a lot of it to to work through. So it could be a finance committee that would be responsible for that. Debt financing and 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 financial plans. When we look at refunding opportunities, when we look at issuing new debt for a variety of capital needs, infrastructure needs, whatever it may be, this group could could become more involved, more educated in in the overall debt structure of the city and and try to help factor in guides and 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 alternatives for dealing with ongoing debt obligations of this city. Because obviously, as we all know, they're a considerable part of this of the budget. The professional service contracts, the mayor mentioned this morning at the at the chamber that we're sorely in need of 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 needing to dust off some of our arrangements with our professional service contracts and contractors, and and that's going to take some some time and effort. So I think that the the opportunities for a group like this to to spend more time in the area of finance are are significant. Whether or not the council wants that to happen or not is, of course, a decision that you'll have to make. But I, for one, I I finance is the organization. It's not going to go away. It's going to become more complicated. It's going to become more politically sensitive. And and I've always been of the mind that the the better that staff can work with council, council and staff, or the public to share that information, to let everybody know that, yep, you have something you want, you have something you want, you have something you want, everybody wants something, it all costs money. We've got to sort through these things because there's a limitation for available funds. So that's the purpose of this group. We haven't had it before. This resolution sets up the the framework for that for that committee if we're going to approve this. And just to again point out, and this is again, a kind of a a point of education for all of us, our code allows councils to do things like this on a committee basis. If they become a permanent standing committee, we've got to do it by ordinance. And that's where we've tripped up with some of our other appointments. We got to catch up with our code and 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 compliance with that code. But if you're going to go ahead with this, as stated in one of the whereases, if you're going to try it and you want to keep it, you want to keep it long-term, want to make it permanent, it would have to fall into an ordinance form at some point. But that's for future considerations. So with that introduction and and and, I guess, description, are there any questions that anyone or of you have with respect to the resolution?
And just to be clear, too, like all of our other committees, this is just, this is just to make recommendations. This isn't setting policy or setting what any of this stuff is.
And this is in essence replacing our personnel committee.
Yes, with respect to finance.
Mm-hmm.
But again, what we did 2019 and what I presume we would do in 2020 is that we don't have a personnel committee any longer. If we have personnel issues that rise to the level of being potential disciplinary actions by the council, it will be the council who will serve as the personnel committee.
Okay, that makes sense.
The finance committee would only look at, in in terms of personnel and and employees, look at at the cost related to that. That would be their role, not disciplinary action. That's still, under current policy, would fall back to council.
Right.
So yes, kind of. Maybe.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2468 with just one minor change. I don't think it's Mary Jill Brigold, I think it should be Bringold.
No, but then I'm not responsible, so keep it that way. Whoever she is.
Well, that's my motion with that change on the typo.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion by Bill and a second by Steve to approve resolution 2468, authorizing the finance committee. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, moving on. Reports. Kyle, you have something for us tonight?
Always. Always the Kyle moment.
Am I cold?
Actually, I think you guys need me for the lightening up of this meeting. So.
What's that supposed to mean?
I like to smile and laugh. That's what it means.
All right.
All right. The chamber doesn't have our big events during this time of year. However, business recognition luncheon was last week, just last Tuesday. We had Daryl Thompson, the Minnesota Gopher, Green Bay Packers football person, wonderful speaker, and we had between 16 and 65 people there. So a very nice turnout and delicious food as well. Then today, this morning, we had our chamber breakfast where our mayor, John Althoff, did his presentation called State of the City. We had over 40 people here. And again, I commend you for a very nice presentation, very good information.
Thank you.
And so that was very nice to have. Now I would like to change it over to some social events. All right. Tomorrow, February 19th, is the open house at the Cannon Valley Senior Center from 1 to 3 p.m. That is to welcome Laura Bremer, their new executive director, and they will also have food and beverages and those kinds of things. So please try to get over to the Cannon Valley Senior Center from 1 to 3. Then we do have a couple of, nope, I got them on the front. Here we go. On the 20th is a blood drive at First Farmers and Merchants from 10:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. So if you didn't give blood today, you can go on Thursday at First Farmers. So we've got that taken care of. Ferndale Market has a Winter Fest on February 22nd. That is 11 to 2 out at their farm. And it looks like they are, they're going to have sleigh rides, all sorts of fun things around the farm. And then the Rotarians are putting on a Mardi Gras. So we're having a Mardi Gras right here in Cannon Falls on February 25th. And that's going to be at Falls Landing. The one last item is this weekend, will be the last weekend for the Cannon Arts Board Dinner Theater at the Artisan Plaza. And so there's evening performances on the 21st and 22nd and a matinee performance on the 23rd. And just go to Cannon Arts Board website and you can get your tickets there. Any questions? Wow. Wonderful. That's good. Thank you very much, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yep.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, anything, library board, Mary Jill?
Oh, they talked about bylaws. It was not exciting. So there wasn't a lot.
Okay. EDA met on February 12th. Morris or Dave, you want to comment on that?
The EDA approved the last remaining contract document to further facilitate the redevelopment of the Cannonball. And that agreement that was approved last week by the EDA is an agreement between the Economic Development Authority and Goodhue County. I anticipate when I get back to my office that I will have a message from Goodhue County that the county board also approved the agreement. So this contract between the Economic Development Authority and Goodhue County will be for the county to deed over the ownership of the Cannonball property for $1 in exchange for the agreement by the Economic Development Authority and Economic Initiatives to jointly finance the further environmental evaluation of the property and ultimately the cleanup of the property. So it's been a process to attain agreements between Economic Initiatives and the EDA, which was done previously, the funders, if you will, of the redevelopment, and now to tie in Goodhue County as the custodian owner of that land, willing to deed that ownership over to the Economic Development Authority for $1. So I presume, hope, anticipate that the county board approve that at their meeting tonight. And if they did, I will, on behalf of the EDA and Economic Initiatives, authorize ATC, Dane Ralston, our consultant, to move forward with about $100,000 next phase of contract work to clean that property up. So I think we'll be moving forward with that. The second thing is that Laura Qualley attended the meeting. She's been working actively with with myself and others on the bland and grant program and the digital marketing program we talked about. Laura came to the EDA and and we talked about the application process for individual businesses who might like to take advantage of some grant dollars for digital marketing assistance, technical assistance. So we finalized some of the the administrative details with the application. Laura has a handful or more, it's Laura, a handful or more of businesses that are waiting to make application to the EDA for bland and grant assistance, EDA deferred loan assistance, and their local contribution to put money available to help them put together a marketing promotional plans for their business using technology, internet, broadband, et cetera. So we're excited to hear that. And I would anticipate that once the first five or six applicants that are waiting in the in the wings here apply and and get their programs going, the EDA talked about this, we we would expect to see additional businesses step forward after this. It's a pretty nice incentive program, and I think it's going to be well received as as we move forward. So it was good to have Laura there and and bring us up to speed on those details.
That's it? That's enough?
That's all I've got.
Yeah. Cannibal, Cannonball's moving forward. That's a good thing.
Big thing.
Okay, let's go around the horn. Wes?
I just got one quick thing tonight. We're going to be doing some work in the alley just east of the post office, so we're going to be shutting that down Thursday. I know it's a pretty busy alley with the mailbox there, so just keep that in mind when you're trying to get to the mailbox. We'll try to keep the mailbox open so you can still use it, but just keep that in mind.
You know, I think we should set up a Public Works meeting here pretty soon. We've got a few issues. I know we got to talk about the trail down at Hannah's Bend, and we got to talk about Marcy French, he's got something with bike in Cannon Falls. So maybe first part of March, we should have a meeting.
We'll get a date.
Get a date picked out and get that that up. Chief?
We are just continuing to watch the weather. We don't like to tow cars or give tickets. They've been actually pretty good this year. When Public Works is going to be out, they let us know, and the officers, you know, go out and try to get the the roads cleared before they come out. With the notice Wes and Tony have been giving us, we've been able to get out and, you know, do some proactive from 9 o'clock till 11 o'clock, trying to get people that may have forgotten to get the cars moved, to get them moved. So that's worked out well for us. Has it been good for you guys on on your your cleanups, Tony? Or Wes?
Yep. Yep. We've had a few reoccurring problems with the same people, but that's is what it is.
And downtown, the permit parking is always a challenge. You get confused, especially if they're new renters.
Yeah.
Okay. Dave, anything else? Steve?
A couple of things. Wes, again, you guys are doing a terrific job. I get up early going in the morning and everything seems to be done already, so. Is anybody interested in revisiting the fee structure for the downtown farmer's market? I've been getting some requests and calls about that. And in our consent agenda today, we got a little money, and I was just wondering if we're going to have a work session, do you think we could discuss that, Mr. Mayor?
You know, that was brought up with the EDA, too.
Forgot about that.
And I forgot about that. Yeah, we probably should. Whether we want to go both places.
Let me, let me.
The money.
Clarify the lay of the land here. Yes, the council's going to be asked to deal with the downtown farmer's market. The permit issue last year was for 2019. There needs to be a a permit issued for 2020. So there will be a a need to have a conversation, either work session or full council, either or both. So that needs to be scheduled.
I think it'd just be brought up at the council. We can discuss it at a council meeting, I think.
Last year, they came and made a presentation. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Matt?
Nothing.
Bill?
Uh, nothing.
Derek?
Nothing.
Mary Jill?
Well, I do have something, and it's of grave import, no. It says here on the upcoming meeting schedule that there's a joint Powers Trail Board meeting on Tuesday, February 25th. That is not correct. They scale back their meetings in the wintertime. So the next meeting is on the most sacred day of the year, March 24th. That's my birthday and Bill's birthday, but he's much older. I always have to add that. So that's the next meeting for the Trail Board. And we've got some really exciting stuff. We saw pictures at the last meeting about how the the bridge reconstruction is going, and they're just beautiful. It's really nice.
I got a question. How old are you going to be on that day?
Younger than you're going to be three days or two days before. Big birthday week.
Ooh.
Birthday week. But Steve is even older than Bill. I didn't think that was possible, but that's all I have.
Shouldn't have to share my birthday.
Morris?
Nope.
Hey, I wanted to congratulate the Bombers Girl High Kick Team for going to state. I think they finished third, and that was great.
Well, yeah, they tied for third, and so they actually came in fourth as far as it goes, but.
But they should have been second, right?
Yes.
Well, they got to state, and we're proud of them.
Yeah, they did great.
Very good.
Okay, had to make mention of that. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Morris, second by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?